Five oh four, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Chancellor has the notice of this meeting been posted?
Yes, I have, Chair. I certify that it has been posted in accordance with the law.
Any public comment?
Yes, sir. We have one individual registered for public comment, Jaden Hamilton.
Good afternoon. My name is Jaden Hamilton. I'm a student of Lone Star College. I'm also a member of the Honors College there. And I stand before you today to discuss the rising price in tuition credit hour for students. So as you know, Lone Star College system is funded in part by the taxes that homeowners pay, but also the tuition that students pay towards their funding, towards their education. Over the past decade or so, we have seen a steady decrease in the price that homeowners pay for their property tax. And yet we have seen a steady decrease, I mean, sorry, a steady increase in the price that tuition is paid about for by students. This is their rate. The two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, it was observed that there was a forty dollar tuition per credit hour for students, and yet this year it's up to a hundred and three dollars per credit hour. That's more than double. I feel like this is unfair because if anyone can afford to pay for an increased price, it's the homeowners and not the broke college students. I may be moving on from Lone Star College and graduating this May, but I want to advocate for those behind me. And lots of students choose Lone Star College because of its affordability. And if the student tax, I mean, sorry, the student tuition rate is rising, it's only unfair because homeowners can afford to pay these prices. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to listen to me and have a great day.
Thank you. Any introductions, special guests, recognitions?
I have one. I'd like to invite Dr. Knut to come up here.
Thank you, Chancellor, Chair Stoman, and the board. I have an invitation that I would like to extend to you tonight. We are engaging in an initiative called I Want to Be a President. Of course, our Chancellor set up this idea. But as presidents, we've taken and run with it to create for the eight people who indicated they wanted to be presidents, an opportunity for professional development for them. We have workshops, discussion boards, shadowing, mentoring. I'd like to invite you to participate, if you can, in some of our upcoming workshops. We have one in April, one in May, and one in June. They're all on the Fourth Wednesday from one thirty to three thirty. Those dates are April twenty fourth, May twenty ninth, and June twenty sixth. The April topic is partnerships, collaboration, and advocacy, being led by Quentin Wright, Gerald Napolos, and Benny Lambert. The May event on the twenty ninth is institutional and cultural awareness and transformation, led by myself, Valerie Jones, and Virginia Ferrari. And in June, we'll be talking about fiscal planning and resource development, led by Kristy Vien and Maura Capper. So just want to issue that invitation. All of the meetings are held at LSC University Park in the Universe Room, except the one in April will be in the Conference Center Room two thirty one. That's it, unless you have any questions.
Dr. Knut, thank you for that. And I'm going to have to excuse myself. Have we gotten written notice of this? I mean, have you sent a notice out to the board?
No, I wanted to.
Would you please do that so we can know?
Yes, sir.
Because I can't remember anything.
Yes, sir. We'll follow up in writing. Thank you, Dr. Knut.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Could I be recognized for a minute?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Before we move on, I know trustees are not allowed by law to comment on public speakers, but the Chancellor is not prohibited from commenting. And I'd like to know if you would make some comments regarding what the student said about tuition, because I'm concerned about it.
Chancellor, you're direct out to Chancellor.
No words. I can't speak to it, but he can. So I'd like to hear you say something. Thank you.
If, if I could, before the Chancellor comments, the Open Meetings Act applies to whatever's discussed at the meeting. So if the item isn't noticed on the agenda, then it wouldn't permit anybody to discuss. I think the Chancellor could provide a brief comment. The problem is when we get into back and forth. So, oh, I just wanted to make that comment.
Asking for back and forth, I'm just asking for the Chancellor to make a comment.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am. And if he doesn't want to do it, then let him say so.
As a first generation college student myself, I'm deeply empathetic to the plight of our students. And if there's anywhere that we can shift the burden away from students, then I totally support that.
Sure.
Absolutely. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty third, two thousand twenty four Board Retreat and the March seventh, two thousand twenty four regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? The item passes, so. Special reports and announcements, Chancellor?
I do have a few quick ones. Thank you. So want to start with Star Gala is April thirteenth from six P M. to midnight. It's at the Woodlands Waterway Marriott. And that you have received an official written invitation. Hope to see everyone there. So far, I think we were estimating about six hundred people. Is that right, Nicole? All right, give or take. We have the Jack Kent Cook Luncheon on April thirtieth from eleven thirty to one. You've also received that invitation. And that one's going to be here at System Office in the Woodlands. And we have, I think, a record, I think it's the number one in the country, if I'm correct, eighteen semifinalists. So that's number one in the entire country. So good job to everyone involved in that. We're going to honor those folks. And then I just really briefly want to talk about financial aid. We're aware at this institution of the plight of our students, going back to sort of even the citizen participation. The Department of Education has engaged in delays and behaviors that are essentially negatively affecting our students. But I can say that even the last email that I sent before I came into this meeting was to Dr. Napolos and Dr. Vien. And I've made it very clear to the two of them, and I'm representing this to the board, that we will not lose any students because of the Department of Education's behavior. We are going to do whatever it takes to make sure that our most vulnerable students, who are dependent on financial aid, do not have to drop out, skip school, or do anything like that, up to and including coming back to the board and asking to dip into reserves. Because as I've mentioned several times to several people at this institution, if we can dip into reserves to build buildings, then we can dip into reserves to build dreams. And I fully intend to come back and ask the board if we need to, whether we can dip in reserves to front the money for all these financial aid students while we figure out what's going on with the Department of Education. So we are super on top of it here at Lone Star College, and our students will not be negatively affected by the administration. And that's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Ready. President's report. I guess Dr. Lambert, you're up, sir.
Say good afternoon, Chair Stoman, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Castillo, and to the members and guests and those who are for Lone Star College. It is a privilege for me to stand before you. It's an honor for me to stand before you. In fact, I'm going to be talking about the Honors College. And to, to put a place on it, to put a spin on it, before I can just get right in and say what I want to say about it, there's some history behind it. It was founded in the fall of two thousand fourteen. And we're in two thousand twenty four right now. So the coming fall will be ten years of such service. We just heard the Chancellor make a note about the luncheon and also the eighteen students who are Jack Kent Cook semifinalists, of which, that in a nutshell means that they're all right now in competition eligible to get up to fifty five thousand dollars because they've elected to earn their degree at a community college right here at Lone Star and go on to a four-year university. Fifty five thousand dollars a year will help just about every student we have be successful at that next level. And the Honors College, to some, may seem like a college in which, a college, shall I say, in which it's elitist and things of that nature. The beautiful thing about Lone Star and setting this program up, Dr. Katie Caruso has ran this program and done a marvelous job with her team. It's grown. And as a result of that growth, they've been able to do things because of their planning that literally is unmatched among community colleges. Just weeks ago, in fact, less than ten days ago, thirty-two of our Honors students were in New York City at Model U N. They scored extremely high in almost every area they were in. They were competing against four-year schools and competing against international colleges and universities. We have a lot to be proud of. As you just heard, we have eighteen students in that category. When I close, I'm going to share with you how many other students in our state, what their Honors College was, just to give you just an idea of how this has progressed. I do want to acknowledge our student speaker who spoke. He's going to be graduating here in May. Congratulations sincerely, because what we want our students to do is to come learn, learn as best they can, and graduate, go to the next level. And when we think of graduation, it is our Super Bowl. And in a nutshell, our Super Bowl is coming up here in about five weeks, five or six weeks. And it is the high time of what we do. We do a lot of bringing students in. We do a lot of working with students, but those who finish the finish line, we really want to celebrate them. One of the reasons the success of the Honors College, and I'm talking all Lone Star. In fact, there's only one college of all of our colleges that we don't have an honors program. But starting this fall, we're going to have it, and that's LSC Online. So all the other colleges have honors college students from different designations doing amazing work. I told you it launched in the fall of two thousand twenty four, excuse me, two thousand twenty, two thousand fourteen. And what is circle there in the middle? One of the strong reasons is because of what they teach and the way in which they do it. I'll say a little about the day in a moment, but the undergraduate research curriculum speaks for itself if you're at a four-year school, especially if you're in graduate school. It's graduate work. They do research papers anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five pages. And as I was talking to Dr. Caruso and the other honors directors, they say in a nutshell that our students, our alumni, come back and say things such as, one of the first things we had to do was to write a fifteen-page paper. They were enthusiastic and excited about it. Many of the native students in the representative colleges, they initially struggle while our students were excited about it because they had been taught honors-level writing and research. And then we have Integrated Student Services Model. It's saying they didn't do it by themselves, but what they did do was in their classes embed other programs that worked to help them be successful. For example, many will say that the honors college student, they have it all going on. They were the top students in their classes, things of that nature. That's not necessarily the case. In the next slide, I'll show you a little more information. There's eighty honors faculty, and the honors faculty also teach regular classes. But they're trained in the honors program a certain way to teach and connect and give the students skills beyond just getting a great grade, but soft skills, professional, pre-professional leadership training. In fact, all of those students that go on these, go on the trips representing the college, whether it's New York, whether it's Greece, wherever it might be, they dress professionally. I was told their last trip, five days, each of them had to be dressed professionally. And students were going, where am I going to get clothes for that for five days? And their directors and Dr. Caruso said, we're going to find it. And they did find it. And there are pictures of them. They looked like they're corporate America. They could stand with anyone, anywhere, and they did. And the evidence supports and shows that. I mentioned the Comprehensive Academic and Student Services. It's so amazing. I said earlier, some think that honors college students are the high-ranking students in their class. Some are, but there are others, in fact, that were recruited by fellow honors students. They get the opportunity to go into the high schools that sometimes we can't go in because they're alumni of those particular high schools, and they talk to students. They don't really talk to them about honors college. They talk to them about higher education. And that message from them, being a Lone Star College honors student, puts us in a place, in a position, to where recruitment is a big bonus that we get from the students who make the grades, who do the things, who take the kind of teaching and training that the faculty and the leadership in the honors program put together. It really puts them in a position where they can speak and talk and act in any situation with whatever kind of situation they might be working with. Some of the students that come into the program are shy. Guess what? They have a program built into each of the honors classes that show them how to overcome shyness. And the next thing you know, they're going, you can't travel unless you do some of the fundamental pieces. And these honors students through the faculty make certain they build it in. So the difference of why I believe our program is what it is, and this is a direct quote from Dr. Caruso, literally speaking, we are the best place for teaching and learning for two-year students who want to achieve at a higher level. And the evidence is there. Over time, the why honors, why LSC answers were such as, I want to go to a college where I can take a trip. So they couldn't get into College X and came here. Otherwise, had to do with things such as, my counselor said it was really small classes and rooms and an academic opportunity. Now, the biggest why over the last five years is they come to our honors program because they heard about it, and they have a choice, and they've selected our choice of LSC honors. Entry, I want to say a word about that. The neat thing about this program, I alluded to earlier. We have all kinds of programs at Lone Star, from G D programs to the honors program. I mentioned graduation. At graduation, you're going to hear some students walking across the stage. They have an A A in honors, an A A S in honors. All kinds of, and you're going to hear also honors with distinction. That really means they didn't necessarily complete the entire honors program, but they in fact took classes that challenged them, that they did well enough to have honors with distinction. The A A and A Ss completed the entire program. And for each of those groups are scholarships available for them. The, it says we're bursting, we're bursting a myth there because when this program started, there were about a seventy percent completion rate, which sounds great, but that wasn't too far away from the average student. Now, it's about a ninety percent completion rate, students in honors. And the neat part about it is the entry pieces. There's more than one way to get into the honors program. Some of the students are referred to the honors program because of a faculty member or another student and have documented everything. And they're kind of like, shall we say, they're kind of like on probation. It's a probation way to get in, and it really allows students to take a chance to see if that might be something they want to do. And as a result, we have over eight hundred students in the honors program at our colleges. And I can tell you by being on the campuses where they are, they're an amazing group of people. I would say young people. We've got different ages, but whatever age you are, you're young when you keep learning. And that's what's happening at Lone Star College. I want to say just a quick word about the curriculum. The students are in the equivalent classes of three thousand and four thousand level classes that are normally junior and senior level classes at colleges and universities. And they're doing exceedingly well. And as a result, we've got partnerships with four-year colleges and institutions throughout. None of that would have happened if we just focused on them getting the grade, having the opportunity, I hope to see you at the luncheon, to see these students in person. And you will see exactly what I'm saying today is exactly how they dress when they know they need to dress a certain way and how they treat people and shake and talk in a certain way. So we've got like four tracks. We've got the, what we call the Chancellor's Fellows and the Presidential Scholar and the Merit Scholar, Distinguished Global Scholar. But general admissions and conditional admissions are the two key pieces that I want to share the message that those who think they might be interested, I think we have one of the best websites for the honors program of many of the websites that we have. I leave that, carry it with you, to please look at our honors program website. I would not say it if it was not extraordinary. It goes to show you that the leadership that put that in, that work with these students, don't just talk it. They literally make it happen, and they put it out there for others to know about. And the last couple of things I want to say, this is, and it's small print, but it's from a student, A.J. Jefferson, who was at the Model U N. in New York just a few weeks, few, few weeks, few days ago. His sentiment is like nearly everyone there. They get to do things in which most students at a community college would not even phantom for that to happen. It all started ten years ago. We're about to celebrate the tenth year in the fall. And I think our hats off to those who put this together, the previous leadership, and to where we are now under our current leadership. You just heard what he said about students. Students are coming first. We will do whatever it takes to work to make it happen so that students in our environment who want to be here and those who, who don't know if they want to be here yet, our job is to give them an environment that we give them feedback that they can make it. And I think this says it best, success at LSC and beyond. This is the chart of those eighteen students. And to the right of that are some of the other colleges. And I'm, this is just, these are facts, not made up. H C C, one of our sister colleges, a fine place, North Lake College in Dallas, they had four. Most of the colleges, Collin County, El Centro, Eastfield, Tarrant County, had three to, three or two. Almost all those added up together is just a little over eighteen. I said in saying and coming to you, it is an honor for me to speak before the board on behalf of something so ironic as the Honors College. I didn't get to be in the Honors College when I was a student, but I am one of the biggest advocates of what they do with the students who start in that college and finish, just as our speaker, walking across our stage. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Dr. Katie Caruso and all of the directors at each of our colleges. They love what they do. I mean, literally love what they do, are proud of it. And I didn't bring photos because it wouldn't be fair. The bottom line is, please, we'd love to see you at the luncheon. You will see these students, and they are authentic and real, just as everything that we're trying to be about and are about at Lone Star College. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that report. I'm a big fan of the Honors College. Do you have any data about the number of students that apply to be in the Honors College versus the ones who are accepted? Any sort of percentages?
That's a great question. I don't have the exact data to that. Let me ask a quick question. Are any honors directors in? This, this is why their website is so amazing. So their recruitment has grown immensely. And it's because we're able to get students into the high schools and represent the high school and talk about higher education, but they're the honors representative. And what happens, once we reach a number, we literally, because we're Lone Star, we can do, and that's why Lone Star Online is going to be emerging into this starting this fall, we can look for other options for students. What we've been able to do is to expand the services in the area of Tomball, Houston North, and University Park without increasing the revenues, money. That was one of the things that Dr. Caruso was super proud of. I don't have that number, but Dr. Kane, I know you well enough to know I will get that number for you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment. This is super. I enjoyed the presentation. It was great. I just wish your directors were here so I could tell them, job well done.
Thank you. I agree with that also, but they're probably doing something for the honors group, knowing them. Thank you very much.
All right, next, the American Federation of Teachers. Dr. Bergdahl.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. John Bergdahl, President of the American Federation of Teachers here at Lone Star College. Tonight, you will find on your agenda an action item that would amend college policy to permit flexible work options for non-faculty employees at Lone Star, employees we generally refer to as staff. Current policy does not permit these options. If you vote to pass this action item tonight, you will be authorizing the Chancellor and his team to begin to develop flexible, flexible work procedures and to set an implementation date. As you will see in the action item itself, the survey Chancellor Castillo implemented last fall showed that flexible work options are something that our staff would be very in favor of. Last month, I presented to you some of the results of the survey that the A F T. conducted in the fall. In our survey, seventy-five percent of full-time staff and sixty percent of part-time staff listed flexible work options as a top priority. When we asked for specifics about what flexible options would be, they would, that they would be interested in, the most common responses were a hybrid work model allowing for some days working remotely and a four-day work week in person. When A F T. learned that Chancellor Castillo was planning to ask you for the authority to develop flexible work options, we decided to ask interested Lone Star employees to electronically sign a letter of support for tonight's action item. I am pleased to report that seven hundred and nine Lone Star employees were willing to sign our letter publicly, not anonymously, declaring their support. In addition, several Lone Star employees representing both faculty and staff are able to join me here tonight in person to show their support. Some of them are over here to my right, and some are in the back to my left. I have in my hand the A F T. letter of support with the attached seven hundred and nine electric, electric, excuse me, electronic signatures, which I would like to hand to Board Chairman Mike Stoma at the end of my talk. We can also provide electronic copies to all members of the board. The text of the letter is as follows. To LSC Board of Trustees from the undersigned, over time, the needs of our students have been changing. The days of assuming that students will take all their classes on campus from eight A M. to five P M. are over. The workplace is also changing. Other employers, and other employers are offering hybrid slash alternative work hours and options, making it more challenging to hold on to our talent at LSC. As you have seen in A F T.'s recent survey, employees have spoken. Flexible work options are highly important to staff. We, the undersigned, support flexible work options that meet the needs of Lone Star College students and employees, and we urge you to vote in favor of authorizing the administration to develop a flexible work policy for staff at LSC. And then that is followed by the seven hundred and nine electronic signatures. Some employees included comments along with their signatures to explain why they support flexible work options. Many of them agreed that flexible work options are important to recruiting and retaining talent, since so many other employers already offer these options and often along with higher salaries. Several note that flexible work options would better enable us to serve students online and at non-traditional times. Others pointed to the cost savings and environmental benefits of not driving into the office every day. A number of signers spoke about special needs children, elderly parents, and their own health challenges that make a standard in-person work week challenging. Without flexible options, some of them stated that they would either need to take Family Medical Leave Act leave time or resign altogether. They would prefer to serve our students, continue to serve our students rather than having to leave the college, and flexible options could allow them to do that. Employees recognize that not every job position lends itself to the same flexible work options and that great care will need to be taken to make sure any new procedures are fair and enable all departments to carry, to continue to carry out their duties efficiently. But since more and more of our interaction with both students and each other is electronic and since expectations are greater that services be available in off-hours, flexible work options can make sense for Lone Star College. During the pandemic, we ran the college completely online. And although not everything worked perfectly, we have expertise and experience to build on. I am going to finish this evening by quoting the comment that one of our employees added to her response to this letter of support. She summarizes far more beautifully than I can the points that she would like you to consider. So I will leave you with her words, and this is a quote. Based on the inclusiveness of the current Work From Home Committee and the approach the chancellor has taken to keep everyone in the system informed through the what's word on the street sessions and monthly chancellor update emails, I believe that Lone Star College leadership has the heart and ability to create a flexible work arrangement policy that can benefit all parties, employees and the college. I hope that the board can vote in favor of allowing the college to attempt to start a flexible work arrangement policy and also place trust in the leadership recently chosen to lead the college in its next chapter. Thank you so much for your time. And again, I have this as a present to Chairman Stoma.
Thank you, sir.
Great, and thank you all for your time and your attention.
Y'all want copies of this? Let's see if you get copies. Do you want to pass it around? Pass it down, then we'll pass it back. Alrighty. Board members, are there any reports anyone would like to make? Yeah, yeah, we'll have copies made, no problem. Thanks. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just three items, if I may. I want to thank Dr. Jones at the Cypher Campus for hosting me for their scholarship luncheon the other day. It was the first time I'd attended and it was quite an experience for me to be able to visit with not just students, but parents and also sponsors as well. So I came back from that feeling very good about what we're doing out in the campuses and the scholarships and what these students are doing with them. Also provided some feedback to Nicole and the chancellor as well on some observations that they were well received, so I appreciate that. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I want to recognize Dr. Gonzalez for speaking at the East Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. I happened to attend as a guest of someone else, not as of the college. It was a nice, nice surprise to see her and I'd like to acknowledge her for not just promoting LSC Kingwood, but the entire system. And she had system slides as well as Kingwood slides in her presentation and talked about the holistic approach that the system takes in educating students and supporting the community, so appreciate that, Dr. Gonzalez. And then this is, this is the really weird, small world thing. So yesterday I was at a breakfast where Congressman Wesley Hunt spoke and I was able, because I know him, was able to speak to him beforehand and reminded him of my role here at Lone Star, my position being elected representing the district and advocated for workforce and federal funds. And he said, well, let me just stop you because your chancellor was in DC recently and I met with him. And then I found out from the chancellor a few minutes ago that Congressman Hunt also toured or met with him at the UP campus. So while I'm out thinking I'm really doing good work by promoting the system and talking about the, you know, what our needs are and our plans, chancellor's already doing it. So good work and thank you for doing that. I think it's important. But Hunt is a supporter of the system, believer in community colleges. And if you have any additional thoughts you want to share, chancellor, feel free. But I think it's just all very positive.
Yes, sir. So, um, yes, we, we met with all of our representatives at this point. You know, just, it's my style. I'm just, I'm an old timer in that way. I don't need people to know who I know and who I've talked to. And so I'm sorry that you learn that way, but yes, sir, we are meeting and greeting with everyone that can positively affect the lives of our students. All elected officials, federal, state, and local administrative officials and all of that. And so I'm glad to know you had nice and kind things to say about the institution.
I hope you didn't think I was implying that you should have told me you'd spoke.
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. I'm just letting you know that, just because I don't sit up here and sort of talk about who I met with or who I know, I just want to make sure that the public knows that those meetings are happening. And so I'm glad to see that they're bearing fruit.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
All right, any other comments by board members, trustee?
Yes, I, oh, go, no, you go ahead. I'm just going to say, the last time we had a meeting, we were talking about going to the preview, president's inauguration. And, you know, chancellor and I did go for the procession. It was indeed, I'd never been to one. Now, maybe some of you have, but I had not. And it was, it was remarkable. You know, the board of regents, you know, they were there, you know, and it, it just was amazing. And of course, you know, the, the kind of person that I am, you know, I kind of got a little thought process there, but I'll talk about that later. Since we've already made history, you know, by having the first Hispanic chancellor, hey, we could also be a first to do something like that. And I don't care if anybody else hadn't done it. I don't care if we haven't done it. I'm a first, you know, I believe in making history all the way. So that gave me an idea. And you know, your chancellor is so modest and low-key, you know, you know how he is. And I told him, it doesn't matter how low-key and modest you are. I'm going to make sure something is done because your mother, I am a mother, and your mom deserves to see you in a public forum in an inaugural investiture. She deserves that. If nobody else does, your mother does. And, uh, and he was just flinching. I said, I don't care what you think, you out of this. I said, you out of this. I'm taking charge right now. And the first thing I did was text Braxton, text, where's my buddy over here? Yeah, Nathan, who's trying to hide. And, uh, and then, you know, and I said, I need to know, I think it's Mr. Harrison, who's the board chair, I mean, who's the foundation chair? And then he was going to put, I got to Nicole, but anyway, uh, he deserves this. You know, the community deserves it. And I, I think that, you know, it's not going to cost college anything, but I mean, you know, I just needed help from the outside of the community. You know, they need to know who he is, that he's too modest, you know, he's too quiet. But all inaugurations happen at the end of the first year of service. So I'm just saying, you know, I just found out today that, you know, something could be done. So, and I was surprised at the board, but anyway, that's me. I, this was just beautiful. And I think, you know, we need to come to the 21st century, hey, Lone Star, we need to be the first, you know. It, it, who cares if nobody else is doing it, you know? It's never been done. We always are the first to do anything, just like the honors college, you know, hey, you know, and I don't care what he thinks, we're going to do something. Because if you'd have seen all these college presidents, you know, the two-year colleges and it was a four-year colleges and, you know, Dr. LaGrange was waving at us, she was so happy to see us be there. You know, all these people, you know, I, I'm just saying, you know, it's such a, if you've never been to one, it is, you know, you, you just light up and you beam and you think, oh, my God. But you know, uh, presidents and chancellors, they deserve this. They deserve it. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Kane?
In the recent newsletter, there were three items that caught my attention. One was the Amadeus Play that's taking place at University Park in mid to late April at the New Theater, which is a product of the last bond issue that LSC had. And, um, uh, it's a beautiful theater. If you haven't had a chance to go, it, it speaks well to our, to our college. Second item was our articulation agreement with Mississippi State University. Uh, I think that's, that's wonderful whenever we can do those kinds of agreements. And then thirdly, I saw where Montgomery College is hosting a neurodiversity awareness event for the Hispanic community. And that looks to be a very good event that will help a lot of people at that particular situation. So wanted to mention those three things.
Any other comments, trustees? Alrighty. Board committee reports. Trustee Maria, would you like to report on your committee's progress, if you would?
Yes, sir, I'm, um, regarding the goals and evaluations committee. Our committee is ready to proceed in a couple of weeks to, to complete our assessment as charged by the chairman. And part of our effort also involves doing the board self-assessment, which we will begin, we, we will have discussion actually today in closed session as well. So I think we were, we're just establishing a timeline to make sure we complete by June. Since we don't have, I know we don't meet in July, so we need, we definitely need to have ready by then. So that's, so we'll, we'll have a report at the next meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Sullivan, would you like a report of policy committee?
Yeah. Yes, sir, thank you very much. No report for finance and audit, but do you have a PRC committee report? I'd like to read briefly, if I may, and thank Ms. Molina for helping prepare it. Following a request from Chair Stoma on February 27th, the Policy Review Committee electronically reviewed proposed changes to the college's, colleges' core hours policy. The chancellor's employee engagement survey results overwhelmingly indicated that college employees want flexible work options. Accordingly, the chancellor proposed these policy changes so the college can begin developing flexible work arrangement procedures. The PRC reviewed clean and redline versions of the proposed policy and approved the policy on March 18th, 2024 to proceed to the board for full review. The proposed policy revisions are included in today's agenda for the board's consideration and the PRC recommends adoption by the full board. Like to thank Dr. Kane and trustee Broussard for assisting in that work. And Chair Stoma, thank you for letting us do it.
Thank you. I want to say that there, there's one, one standing committee by policy and that's the Audit and Finance Committee, which we have to maintain. That's active. Trustee Sullivan has chaired the Policy Review Committee, which has, has been necessary. We've gotten a lot of work done and that committee has just done fabulous work in moving these policies through so the administration can do their work and we can, we can do ours. And then the, the committee chaired by trustee Maria is a special committee, looking at the chancellor evaluations, board evaluations, et cetera. Let me say that if we need a committee, if you have an idea for committee, if we've got a subject we need to consider as a board, then I, I am entertaining, you know, any recommendations for that committee. And certainly what I would ask is that if you make a recommendation, you know, specify what it is, what you want to accomplish. And if you have recommendations of who should be the members to work with you on that committee, because I'm assuming you're coming, coming forward, you want to work, you know, you know. So I'll put you to work and you can name folks that are trustees who may want to work with you. And we, we will make that happen. We're, we're here to facilitate, uh, you know, changing policy, any changes that's going to make us better, better governance body, governor's body, a better college. So I just want to make it clear that that's open. And as chair, I can certainly sanction any committee along, along the lines of specific purpose. So please.
Chair, can I add a comment, please? I appreciate that. May I add a comment?
Yeah.
Appreciate the, the recognition, but also, as I said, trustee Kane and trustee Broussard help. And I think that trustee Pierce, you headed up a PRC previously, didn't you, as well? Okay, but you know, so I just want to be clear that I'm not the only one that's doing some committee work, that we have other trustees that are engaged in doing it as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, didn't want to leave you out there, trustee Pierce.
Any other comments there before we move along? All right, let's consider the consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda. Do I have any recommendations to pull items for further discussion? None? Going once, going twice? All right, then may I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven?
Subtle.
Second.
All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then all items pass. Thank you. Financial report.
Good evening, trustees. So looking at your financial statements in your report and your binders, the financial statement for month ending February 29, 2024 does, does show us continuing to track, as we have shared with you the last several months, that to date in month six of our 12-month reporting period, we are at approximately 20.1% of our overall expected revenue budget. State appropriations increase, increased by $24.448 million from the prior month. And again, that was due to our second payment of our three pay schedule from state appropriations. We did receive that in February. Tax revenues also increased $31.8 million from the prior month from additional tax payments received. Again, our tax payments typically are our highest months of receipt are December and January and February. So we should start to see the tax payment start to decrease or start to level off in month, in next month's report, which would be March. Because obviously we're halfway point, we're halfway into the fiscal year with February being month end of month six. And looking at our expenditures, again, we're tracking at only 43.1% of expenditures, looking at a total of $192 million actual expenditures for month end of February. Not, nothing necessarily abnormal there, but just tracking a little bit lower than where we were this time last year. Looking at your fin- financial statement in your binder, you can also see that state appropriations continues to track with a forecasted budget variance of the $8.4 million. That was an increase in state appropriations, leaving us a remainder of 73 million year-to-date receivables. We will receive the last pay of the, of the payment for state appropriations in June. Tuition and fees is continuing to track on level with budget with summer tuition receivables still pending. Obviously, January and February are our highest months of recent coming in for spring and we will continue to receive tuition and fees for our summer months. Taxes are a little behind schedule of what we anticipated in budget, but we continue to monitor those and we'll continue to report that out as we track out the remaining months of the fiscal year. Looking at expenditures, again, we are still at 43.1% and we are on track there. If you're looking at our overall expenditures, of course, personnel being the biggest expenditure that we carry on our books and we are tracking well at that, at being right at 50% of where we are and where we should be at this pay, at this place, at this halfway point. So. Looking in your binder, we do, we did include the Hurricane Harvey reimbursement. I know we talked about that. It was right on time. This is typically our quarterly report of when we would report this information. So when you're looking at the visual, you have more detailed notes in there. We did receive $1.45 million in December of 2023 as part of our Harvey reimbursables. We received another $506,000 in March, even though that's not necessarily, in our February report, I wanted to make sure you had up-to-date information that we did receive another $506,000 for March for that. So total reimbursements, if you're looking at the chart, that we received from our three sources, which would be FEMA, state funds, and insurance, we've received 54 million point, well, almost close to $55 million to date for. we've received $54 million, well, close to $55 million to date for receipts. Total expected, we're still thinking we're going to see maybe $1.86 million in receivables. That is still being reconciled with the various entities. So there is still about $1.86 million pending that we could expect to receive. And so again, if you're looking at the chart, we have received about a little over $5 million in excess of what we actually spent on our Harvey, and that is to be used towards a Kingwood mitigation project and for the future floods. And if and when FEMA reimburses us for that, then we would have to return those funds to the state, anything above and beyond what we were out of pocket. So that's a little bit details for you in terms of the Harvey expenditures and our most updated receivables related to that. Your construction report is also in your binder, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
The board will now go into a closed session according with Section 551 of the Texas Government Code, subsections 071, 072, 074, 076. I will say that we will not conduct any business when we come back, but pretty much will continue the meeting then adjourn immediately. So go have a good evening. With that, I adjourn for a closed session. I reconvene our regular section at 7:01. Are there any suggested future agenda items? Yes, sir.
Don't shoot me for bringing this up. I don't know if it's an agenda item or if it's a discussion at some future time, but I'm a believer in whoever's in charge of, whoever our chancellor is, when he's allowed by law to respond to public speakers, that we owe the public that. I just can't in good conscience, and we did it. Think back to the home state exemption discussions when Mrs. Scruggs came up here and 15 other people. Then the chancellor made comments to them, like, you know, it's part of our plan to review this, and we're going to take it under consideration, it's up to the finance committee, this, you know. Let's communicate with people when they come up and talk to us. So I don't know if that's a future agenda item or what that is. I don't know where to put it.
I can review. There's some.
Well, let's let trustee Kane chime in, excuse me.
Trustee Kane, I think your mic may be off.
Yeah, I don't know if this is local, if it's LSC policy or it's part of the education code. But if an item is not on the agenda and a speaker is speaking something that's not on the agenda, I'm not sure the chancellor can respond other than some very general comments that the item will be addressed through written communication. If it's on the agenda, then I think the chancellor has more leeway to address the specific item.
That's correct. There is some language in the Open Meetings Act that talks about limitations on how you can respond to an item that's not on the agenda. So I will go pull that up and I can share that so that everybody's on the same page. But so there's some language in the Texas Open Meetings Act that pertains to comments on an agenda item, and I think that's what you're thinking of. But both are addressed to some extent, and I can work with Nancy to put something together so everybody is aware of what the limitations there are.
Certainly not trying to stretch the law or create new law or anything. What I'm drawing on is my experience in other public positions as well as my role at HCAD, where as an HCAD director, I cannot respond to someone that comes up and gives public comment, but the chief appraiser can say, "Mrs. Smith, thank you if you'll get with Nathaniel after the meeting." I mean, there's some interaction as opposed to coming up and talking to someone, and there's just absolutely no reaction. I think it's disrespectful to the public.
Fair enough. You're going to do the law on that one, then chancellor can make his choice. Any other discussions, folks? Then at 7:04, our call is meeting adjourned. Thank you.